Call to order the April 13th meeting of the Cary Town Council. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember George for our ceremonial opening.
Thank you. We have a special guest in our audience tonight. We do have students from our French Sister City, from Le Touquet. And I'm going to welcome them and tell them it's a great pleasure to have them with us and talk a little about the exchange. And if you'll understand French, follow along. Bonsoir et bienvenue surtout à nos invités. Ce soir, c'est une très grande plaisir d'accueillir dix étudiants et deux professeurs du lycée hôtelière de Touquet. Nous sommes ravis qu'ils soient avec nous à Cary. Cet échange entre Le Touquet et la ville de Cary est son début en 1992, même qu'avant que vous soyez nés. Nous vous souhaitons tous un agréable séjour ici. Welcome them and told them we've had this exchange since 1992 and we're glad to have them with us. And now we all stand and the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to do so? There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And our first recognition is with the French culinary students. And I'll recognize Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Would our French delegation please join me here at the podium and their guests and Chris Carmichael and thank you. Just look at them and look, smile. Well, first of all, another welcome to all of you. I hope you like this. I hope it reminds you of Paris in the springtime. The weather was, come on, the weather was beautiful and it was wonderful. And you're very special to us. As, as Councilmember George said, some of you may not have understood it out there, but our French Sister City is special because it was our first Sister City. So you are our first love. And it is what is very special is we have had a student exchanges longer than any other Sister City. And we're so proud that you're here with us today. You know, people, people often develop their most lasting impressions of another culture through the face-to-face. And that's what we have when we have these exchanges. So they're here today to study and hone their skills at some of our leading hotels and restaurants. And those restaurants include Heron's at the Umstead, Prestonwood Country Club, and the Marriott Crabtree. And this has been a longstanding exchange. And we, as a town of Cary, are so proud through our Sister Cities organization to be part of that. Let me introduce our folks today. I hope you will recognize your name. And when I say your name, just wave to the people of Cary, all 162,000. So here we go. Okay, here we go. Colleen Bayou? Colleen? There you go. Come on, get up there. Okay. And we have Nicolas Barria? Barbier? Barbier? Come on. And we have Fiona Bardon? Fiona? She's hiding in the back there. Okay. We have Lucy Becalain? Lucy? We have Antadin? Hugo? Antadin? Did I get that right? Antadin? Is that right? Okay. All right. We have Lucy Laoye? Lucy? I got the Lucy. Come on, give me a break. All right. We got Florian Mayu? Florian? All right. We have Simone Peter Zach? Simone? Welcome. And we have Flora Tagliabue? Flora? And we have Benjamin Wei. Thank you. We also have their two chaperones, which we have to give them a lot of credit for taking care of all this. And that is Marion Vabiani? Marion? Marion and I were talking German earlier. So we found a common language, didn't we, Marion? Okay. And the other chaperone is Eric Benoit. Eric? It is always a pleasure. Let's give him one more round. I just can't tell you on behalf of the council how, how important this is. You know, it sounds a little corny when today's times with all the challenges in, in the world. What brings us all together is our friendships. And we value so much our friendship with our French community. And I want to thank you all again for being here. Now, I understand one of you is going to say a few words, and I think that's going to be Fiona Bardon? Fiona? Can I have you come up here and say a few words? Thank you. There you go, right here.
Hello. So on behalf of all the students, we'd like to say thank you for the warm welcome. We look forward to learning more about your culture and your country. Thank you.
Fiona, if you're going into politics, you're going to have to learn to kind of stretch that. But you know, so much of this is because of our staff. We have Chris Carmichael as the staff to our Sister Cities. And we have Barbara Shepherd as our president of Sister Cities. Let's give them all one more.
Before you leave, I just want to say that every time the students come from Le Touquet is a special time for us, especially for me. I've hosted students since 2001, not every year, and of course, not this year, but created some great friendships. And I chose to spend my 30th anniversary in France. I leave in 10 days. And I will be the first mayor ever to visit Le Touquet. And I'm looking forward to that. And I'll be over there while you're over here, and then I'll come back and you'll go. So we'll miss each other. But it's such a great friendship and take time to make that friendship strong. I know we're going to try to see the first student we ever hosted in Paris while we're there. And I think she has three children now and she's 15 years older. And so it's real exciting, the friendships that you make and something I'll never forget and I hope they never forget as well. So thank you all so much for being here. Thank you.
And now they're going to enjoy the Crosstown Pub. So they get some culture. Ed, we have a quorum without you. You can go with.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We now move to our second item on the recognitions, reports, and presentations, and that's the Town Manager update. Mr. Steigl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. First and foremost, I would like to thank SAS for inviting us yesterday to attend their topping off ceremony for Building A, another new bright tallest building. Tallest building in Cary. More signs of Cary's economic success and the success that SAS has had and just how much the two of those are related. So just wanted to say how much I enjoyed that. I know council members did as well. It was a great event. Wish them all the success in the future as well. Now, on a more serious note, there are several pieces of legislation that are currently under consideration at the General Assembly that would have a significant impact on the citizens of Cary. The information I'm about to present will be contained on the city, on the town's website under the Newsroom tab. But there are a couple I'd like to highlight. The first one is House Bill 436, which deals with regulatory fees. Essentially, this would prohibit the Town of Cary from collecting impact fees related to new development. That would result in 11.6, a loss of $11.6 million annually to the Town of Cary or the equivalent of five cents on a tax rate. And maybe more importantly, it would change a longstanding council policy of being to, of having new development pay its own way. And it would thus be subsidized by the existing taxpayers of Cary. The second is Senate Bill 434. And again, all of this will be on the town's website under the Newsroom tab, which would amend our environmental laws. So Senate Bill 434. And this limits local government authority to require riparian buffers larger than those required by this, by the state. This could eliminate the town's authority to provide urban transition buffers, which protect the environment, water quality, and homeowners would exacerbate flooding issues. Again, another key element in Cary's success over the years. And then the last one I'll highlight this evening, and unfortunately, there are many more, I've got several pages here, is Senate Bill 94 called Elections Transparency. The name's a little ironic, but beginning in 2019, changes all offices that are currently elected on a nonpartisan basis to partisan. So I'll read that again. Changes, beginning in 2019, changes all local offices that are currently elected on a nonpartisan basis to partisan. I'm sure that our citizens, and certainly I know the council does, appreciates the fact that part of what, key component to good government, a key component to what makes Cary great, is the fact that there is no Republican or Democrat way to build a street. And so later on the agenda tonight, there's going to be consideration of our street rehabilitation program that's done based upon science, meaning those streets that are most in need are those that get funded. Doesn't matter there, we have no idea if those homeowners are Republican or Democrat or independent or what have you. But this would fundamentally change the nature of local government in North Carolina. And I would ask our citizens to think if partisanship makes for better government or if nonpartisanship makes for better government. And I think the answer is obvious to all of us. It's incumbent that our citizens are aware of these matters. It's incumbent that we help you become educated to those and voice your concerns to your state legislatures. We will have this information on our website under the Newsroom tab again. And if you have any questions, please contact the Town Manager's Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steigl. We now move to our third item on the agenda. It's called Public Speaks Out. Our next agenda item, for our next agenda item, we've included instructions for speaking on this forum on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the printed agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes for their comments, and you may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. And we do have one public hearing this evening. As I said, there's a three-minute time limit, and I will enforce a three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium. And when the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining. And when the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that means your time has expired. And at that point, I will immediately interrupt you, not trying to be mean, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I thank you in advance for adhering to our three-minute time limit. We also ask that if you're here with a group, that you have a spokesperson on the group to speak on behalf of everyone so that we don't have repetitive comments. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that this is a business meeting and we don't applaud or make remarks from our seats or anything else that may distract from the business meeting. So now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward. Anyone for Public Speaks Out? Everybody's waiting for the public hearing? Okay. All right, we'll close Public Speaks Out and move to the consent agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items on the consent agenda. We have minutes. Ratification of the AAA Car Care Center modification request resolution. Ratification of Grand Heights Drive grocery modification request resolution. Request for consent of relinquishment of the Raleigh Extraterritorial Jurisdiction. Would council members like to pull any of these items off the consent agenda for discussion?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. There's a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We move to our fifth item on the agenda, public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Now you have five minutes for your comments. Our only public hearing tonight is 16 REZ 32 Silverton PDD Amendment Waltonwood. Ms. Granton of our staff will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to refer to our Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation at a future date. And we'll probably see this in at least a couple of months from now, if not longer. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a request for a portion of the Silverton PDD to be amended, Parcels A and I. The subject property is located at the intersection of Evans Road and Cary Parkway on approximately 41 acres. It's two distinct parcels in the Silverton PDD, Parcel A and I, as they were assigned back in 1987. Here's a zoomed-in view of the subject property, showing that both parcels are vacant. Many of you on the council have seen cases come before you over the years. There've been a variety of different requests for development. Some of them have been withdrawn, some of them have been denied, but the property has never been developed. So the applicant is before you tonight with rezoning request for two different uses on each of the parcels. The subject property is zoned PDD major. The dark blue line shows you the Silverton PDD, which is in close proximity to the Weston PDD. And then the subject property is highlighted in red. This shows you the map from 1987 that shows you where this property sits in relation to the other parcels. Parcel A currently designated on the Silverton PDD for office and institutional use. And then Parcel I, which has been designated for shopping center or retail use. At the time this application was submitted last fall, it was before the Cary Community Plan was adopted. And at that time, the subject property was owned on Cary's land use plan, was designated on the land use plan as commercial and office and institutional. The property was also within an activity center, which has now gone away with the adoption of the new Cary Community Plan. But at the time of the application, the process was for the applicant to submit a preliminary development plan along with the PDD amendment. So they did not have to apply for a land use plan amendment, but they did have to give us more detail. So they submitted a proposed preliminary development plan with the PDD amendment that showed both Parcel A and Parcel I. This is the really detailed plan that has been in review with a Development Review Committee for several months. This next slide helps give a little better picture of how much open space and buffering is still proposed to be preserved with what the applicant has requested. Parcel A is proposed for 212 multifamily residential units. The buffers that were part of the original PDD are still being preserved. The applicant has proposed a public art feature at the corner. There's an amenity site with the plan, with swimming pool, neighborhood recreation area. The density is less than 10 dwelling units per acre. There's no major reductions to anything in terms of LDO standards for building separation, building size. So the layout, the layout is nothing that's caused staff any anxiety about what's been proposed in terms of how the site was laid out or developed. There's a few minor modifications to typical LDO standards that have been requested. A parking reduction of up to 15%. Reduced separation between access points for an internal driveway network. What's required is 150 feet. They might have 150 feet, but they've asked for a minor reduction, which staff is comfortable with. On the south side of Cary Parkway, Parcel I, they have proposed a life care community on a portion of the property closer to the intersection. That's Track One in Parcel I. And then on Track Two, closest to Winfair Drive, they've proposed 37 townhomes. Once again, buffers that were part of the original PDD have been proposed to be preserved, and a public art feature has been proposed. And the applicant has proposed a landscape buffer in between the two uses. Once again, there's some minor modifications to LDO standards. The most important one is the request for the removal of a champion tree. There's a 36.5-inch white oak on the subject property. And this is something that could be asked for through a quasi-judicial process at the time of a development plan. But because there's a preliminary development plan, and you can see where that tree is located on the property, then it's appropriate for you to consider this as part of the preliminary development plan process. And then there is also a request for an internal travel aisle to have parking rather than having just parallel parking. That's this street here. And this is something that upon further review with staff, the determination's been made that this building really does have frontage along Cary Parkway, which is a requirement. So this, this ultimately is not an issue that anyone with the DRC had any concern over. The building would be sited, if approved, facing a public road. The site is impacted by stream buffers and floodways according to Cary's most recent GIS maps, and field determination of those features would be required at the time of development plan review. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facility's master plan identifies a greenway trail on the northern portion of the property. That's Parcel A. It meanders back and forth on both this property and the adjacent property to the north. And the exact location of that trail is something that would be determined at the time of development plan review. According to our comprehensive transportation plan, both Cary Parkway and Evans Road are thoroughfares, and Winfair Drive is a major collector road. There was a traffic analysis that was conducted in association with this rezoning request. What you see here are the different intersections that were studied, highlighted in red. And then the blue dots represent, represent access points to the site. In your staff report, there's a list of the suggested mitigations. And the applicant has proposed to offer zoning conditions to address several of them, mainly the ones that pertain to the subject property, to access points along the property frontage. Cary's transportation and facilities plan shows that there is a future Go Cary route that would be located along Cary Parkway, highlighted here with the green dashed line. As this plan moves through the process, it's going to be evaluated under the Cary Community Plan. As we look at this and take it into consideration, we'll examine the plan policies, guidance regarding infill compatibility, transitions between developments, and we'll look at the site's future growth framework designation. So as I pointed out earlier, when this was first submitted, the property to the north, Parcel A, was designated on our land use plan as office and institutional. Under our new growth framework plan, this is now designated as an employment mixed-use campus. And the property to the south, which was previously designated for commercial, is now designated on the growth framework map as a traditional neighborhood. So what's been proposed with a life care community and the townhomes is a match according to the growth framework map. On the northern side of the property with the mixed-use campus, the uses there are predominantly office. There is the opportunity, however, to consider residential use as well. So as we look at this plan, we'll look at those two areas very closely, taking into consideration the Cary Community Plan that came as a result of many years of the Imagine Cary process, considering the fact that the live policies mean it provides greater opportunity for housing in this vicinity, but also being mindful of the fact that this would remove land from an inventory of prime office sites of over 20 acres. Property owners within 800 feet of the subject property were notified by mail, and the property was posted. There was a community meeting back in November, November 2nd, 2016. Number of nearby residents had questions about the site design, the density, traffic impacts. They were eager to see the result of the traffic study. Then staff has received calls from some citizens concerned about the loss of office use for economic development, the loss of potential retail services for neighbors. We've only had two or three calls pertaining to that. Traffic mitigations, we've had two calls on that, a citizen wondering if additional signals could be provided. And then transitions between uses. Nearby neighbors wanted to make sure that buffers were being protected as they were shown on the original PDD. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present. And following the public hearing, we'll both be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Granton. This time I'd invite the applicant forward for their remarks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morningstar Law Group here on behalf of Singh Development. I'm actually going to keep my comments brief tonight and hand it off to Mike Kame of Singh to talk about the use a little bit. As you all are aware, Singh has been involved in Parcel I for a long time. They've, they've owned the site for 11 years and have been trying to figure out what is, what is a use that makes sense in this location. And as, as the council is aware, you know, one of the things that we've heard over the course of the years is not only the preservation of prime office sites, but making sure that there is, there are residential opportunities within proximity to Weston. In fact, we've seen some parcels in Weston that were previously designated for office turn over to residential uses because of the demand for residential living opportunities for people who would be living and working in the Weston area. And so we believe when, when Singh approached me about this opportunity, it seems to fit very well with the idea of providing for complementary, complementary residential to the Weston area. What I learned after I got engaged by Singh was that while these are two different parcels and two different uses, this is a, and why I'm going to hand it off to Mike, it's really a unique use that they have in mind for this site. What, and this is a growing trend in the market, what they're seeing is that in places like Cary, North Carolina, and they're seeing this around the country, you have the, the people who have lived in the five-bedroom house, whose kids are gone, and they now want to, they want to downsize, and they want to move into the apartment. But they also want to move their parents. You know, the baby boomers want to move their parents to the area so they can live closer to them and take care of them. And they, they view this as an opportunity, and they're seeing this across the country, of having these intergenerational residential opportunities where the boomer can move down and literally move their parents in across the street. And so when, as I have been educated about this as an opportunity, it's exciting to me because I don't think we have anything like that anywhere in this market, much less in the Town of Cary. And as you all are aware, the need for, for senior living is a priority for the town. And so I'm going to hand it off to Mike. But I, as I've learned more about it, and I'm personally excited about the opportunity to provide this in this area, I think it's a use that makes sense. And I, I think it will be a really nice fit, given its location and what the town's priorities are. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mike Kame, Singh Development Company. As most of you know, we've been trying to work on
fit very well with the idea of providing for complementary, complementary residential to the Weston area. What I learned after I got engaged by Singh was that while these are two different parcels and two different uses, this is a, and why I'm going to hand it off to Mike, it's really a unique use that they have in mind for this site. What, and this is a growing trend in the market, what they're seeing is that in places like Cary, North Carolina, and they're seeing this around the country, you have the, the people who have lived in the five-bedroom house, whose kids are gone, and they now want to, they want to downsize, and they want to move into the apartment. But they also want to move their parents. You know, the baby boomers want to move their parents to the area so they can live closer to them and take care of them. And they, they view this as an opportunity, and they're seeing this across the country, of having these intergenerational residential opportunities where the boomer can move down and literally move their parents in across the street. And so when, as I have been educated about this as an opportunity, it's exciting to me because I don't think we have anything like that anywhere in this market, much less in the town of Cary. And as you all are aware, the need for, for senior living is, is a priority for the town. And so I'm going to hand it off to Mike, but I, as I've learned more about it, and I'm personally excited about the opportunity to provide this in this area, I think it's a use that makes sense, and I, I think it will be a really nice fit, given its location and what the town's priorities are. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mike Camm, Singh Development Company. As most of you know, we've been trying to work on this property we purchased at the corner of Cary Parkway and Evans for a very long time. And I think we've come to the realization, certainly on the commercial use, that there really is not a demand for that use. We've tried, believe me, we've tried just about every possible use there that you could think of, and it just doesn't quite work. It's what's the commercial industry considers a tweener. And that's just the way it is. So we've struggled mightily over the years to find something that made sense for this site. And as most of you know, you know, we are senior housing developers, owners, managers. We have our one Waltonwood. Waltonwood's our brand, senior housing brand, at the corner of Cary Parkway and US One. Very successful, we're very happy with it, we love being there. But we've, we've, as we've evolved as a company and as a manager particularly of these projects, we learned a great deal about what makes a, a property successful. And as Jason mentioned, one of the, of the phenomena that we've, we've grown to understand over the years is a highly important intergenerational relationship between the residents in our community and their families, their children, and even their grandchildren. We've been doing this for 30 years now. This would be the 15th Waltonwood that we would develop. So we think we've learned a lot. We've, we've tried to improve every project we ever do, try to make it better. And this maybe, maybe time has, has been beneficial to us. It's given us, given us an opportunity to consider a, a, a different sort of combination of uses that, to us, make a lot of sense and really address a phenomena, that's a national phenomena, of intergenerational relationships. There is a, just one example, there's a nonprofit in, that's based in Washington DC. It's called Generations United. You can look it up on the internet if you like. It happens to be funded by the MetLife Foundation. And that particular organization promotes intergenerational communities, interactivity among generations. I mean, I'm, I have a unique situation, that I have a young daughter, and I have my mother-in-law live with me, so I, I live in a three-generation family myself. So I, I have a personal understanding of the, the value of having generations interact with each other on a daily basis. Having said that, that is really what led us to the planning concept that we present to you this evening. Our Waltonwood is what we're proposing in the property that we currently own. As Deborah mentioned, we have 37 townhomes behind it that back up to Winfair. We did that for two reasons. One, we thought it was a good transitional use to be adjacent to the, the residential along Winfair. But also, all of those townhomes are designed as first-floor masters. So we are specifically designing them and targeting those for empty nesters, who potentially would be the parents of our Waltonwood residents. Across the street is been termed apartments, and I, I need to educate you that all rental communities are not the same. The product that we're proposing is a product that we've done in Michigan many times. As you probably know, we're a Michigan-based company, and we have, we have our office where I'm located here in Cary. We've been here for 10 years now. Every one of these, we have stacked ranches and townhomes. Every unit has its own individual attached garage, direct entry garage. You pull into your garage, you're home. You shut the door, you're home. It's not like any community that you have here in Cary or really in metropolitan Raleigh. The reason we did that was because we are, as Jason mentioned, we are really targeting the empty nesters who really want, they're, they don't want to own anymore, they've had the big house for a long time, the kids are grown, they're ready to have a more carefree lifestyle, and they, and they want somewhere they can, we call it lock-and-go. And that's exactly what we're offering. It's a very upscale community, they're very nice finishes. This is really more like a condominium, if you will, in as far as the finishes we, we provide. But it, and we have this phenomena in our projects we built in Michigan, where we have a lot of empty nesters, or even seniors, that live in our, our stacked ranches because they want one floor. And they are pre-Waltwood residents. And a lot of times, as they age in place, they then need greater care, and we're right there, and we give them preferential treatment to, to come into our communities. So we saw this as an opportunity to do something really that the, that the marketplace and the industry as a whole really is pointing us towards, and, and we've educated ourselves and learned that intergenerational relationships are hugely important, not only for our seniors, but really for their children and their grandchildren, and to have interrela-, interaction with each other and to live close to each other. So we, we, we are fortunate, we think, to have an opportunity to have these two projects across the street from each other, and that's really the reason that we presented them as one project, because from our perspective, they are one. They're intergenerational, they relate to each other, and, and we're hoping that, that you can see our, our vision as well. And we look forward to hopefully working with town staff and council and making this reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now's the time for the public hearing for 16 REZ 32, and I would invite our first speaker
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening regarding this rezoning matter. My name is Deanna Nelson. I own and operate BioLink Life Sciences. We're a business that's located immediately adjacent to Site A on the map. And I've marked our business location with an X on the maps that she's going to be distributing, and there is a CH on those maps as well, which is the location for Cary Church of God. I first built my business in 2003, when I upfit a shell of a building. I use this for contract research for companies that are developing drugs, medical devices, and nutritional supplements, both in RTP and around the world. I chose this site because it was adjacent, close to the airport, close to I-40, and isolated from residential areas. I have invested well over a million dollars in building my business. Next door to me is an industrial chemical company who have made the same kind of investment. This consideration is important because we have regular semi-traffic, we have the potential, but we have not realized the potential, for generating noise and odors. We are chemical businesses. We do comply with all state, federal, and local laws, but there is that potential. We do have waste that we dispose of regularly using large vehicles. I'm concerned about this new construction for several reasons. When Cary Church of God was built, because of inadequate training, I suffered $35,000 in water damage because they did not know how to turn on and off their water. I'm very concerned about inadequate drainage and drainage being redirected downhill to my property. I do not want to suffer this kind of damage again. When they put up the, that cell tower, my building suffered structural damage because of the heavy equipment that was used in its construction. I don't want that to happen again. I do not want to face complaints about the noise, the odors, truck traffic in the future because I was there, I've been there for 16 years. This is a new development. They should be aware that they're going to be their neighbors. I'm also concerned about security. I was isolated for a good reason. We have chemicals that are of interest to those who want to develop drugs on the side and in their garage, and I do not want to have to worry about someone breaking into my facility. I'm, finally, I'm concerned about the population density and the lack of a, a common ground, an area where people can relax, a small park-like area. Certainly in Parcel A, it isn't there, and in Parcel I, there is no provision for it at all. And believe me, when someone is 90 and 95, as my parents were, they each had a car. So that, I hope you're allowing for at least two cars for every person who's going to be living either in Parcel A or Parcel I. I think that the plan shows inadequate consideration of the high population density that's going to be introduced in this area. Certainly, it appears to have inadequate parking for all of the people that are working there. One of my concerns about the lack of common space, open space for a park-like area, is that Cary Church of Town, Cary Church of God now has a school. The kids play in the parking lot. They don't have a playground to play on. Now, it, you know, this is not a place for kids to be riding bikes and, and playing on their recesses. And I'm, I'm concerned that the, that's the same lack of consideration of these simple everyday things will be shown in developing this property. I thank you for your attention. I'm available by phone if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Holson. I live on New Rail Drive in Silver Oaks. I've heard comments that putting a life care community on Parcel I, the corner currently designated as the Silverton Plan Development District, is better than what could go there. Clearly, we have faced worse proposals in the last 11 years. Despite the fact this land is supposed to be for commercial use, it was bought by Singh several years ago with the intention of flipping it for residential use. A so-called mixed-use plan with 153 rental units was withdrawn in 2006. A gas station was vetoed in 2008. High-density townhomes, wouldn't you rather have this in a gas station? Was denied in 2009. I remember two comments the town council made, though those, at the time especially the last denial. First, that a high-density residential area would not be a compatible transition to the low-density, single-family homes of the Silver Oaks neighborhood. Second, that it would not be the proper use for property that's the gateway to Cary on Evans Road for people driving into Cary, to see some kind of a monstrosity just sitting there. Once again, we are faced with a request to change the land use designation for this current non-residential piece of property to allow a life care community, which is labeled as a prohibited use under, as it's currently zoned. I'm beginning to understand that Silverton will not be getting the retail area that it was supposed to have because they've tried everything, and the greenways that were originally supposed to be part of the Silverton community, which is a very sad realization. So a life care community is better than what could go there, maybe, but there are better options for this neighborhood corner. However, the almighty dollar will probably prevail in this situation, which is unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Jeff Cox. I also live on New Rail Drive in Cary. Uchi Barra said it best, it's deja vu all over again. I think I've spoke before you five, six times now. 2007, mixed-use rezoning with Singh, 153 units, retail office. 2007, RWC Properties, 328 apartments. 2008, annexation with Singh, gas station. 2010, eight, 184 apartments, 45,000 in retail with Singh. 2013, a rezoning, 216 apartments, again with Singh, and now this proposal for you. One of the issues I have is I'm confused as to why these properties were brought together on one rezoning rather than two rezonings. It seems like an all-or-nothing type proposal, and I think it would have been better to have them divided since they are, in fact, two different landowners. Property A with RWC Properties and Property, or Parcel I, with GLC Development, AKA Singh. So I'm, I'm confused as to why they weren't split out, and then so that you could vote them each on their own merits rather than as a one complete unit. I don't necessarily have a huge problem with Parcel I with the Life Care Center. That's sort of commercially. And the townhomes, that seems to be an appropriate use near the Silver Oaks community. I do have an issue with Parcel A and the, the 212 apartments. I don't know if you're, how familiar you are with the number of apartments in the area, but I did a little analysis on the number of apartment complexes within about two miles of the intersection of Cary Parkway and Evans, and there's about 24 that I could find. And those 24 apartment complexes comprise nearly 7,000 units, and I think adding another 200 and some may just be a little bit too much for the area. So that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, and kudos to the new town park. I like the fountain.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Whistler. My wife and I live at 100 Chancellors Ridge Court in the Silver Oaks subdivision directly across Winfair from the Parcel One of the rezoning request. And my comments this evening are primarily directed at Parcel One bounded by Cary Parkway, Evans Road, and Winfair Drive. First, I'd like to thank Mike Camm and Singh Development and Deborah Grant with the Plan Department for their willingness to respond to questions regarding both this proposal and the rezoning process. Both have been very helpful. As you know and have heard, this is the latest in a series of rezoning and development proposals for this property over the past several years. We have been vocal in our opposition of previous plans. However, I'm pleased to indicate our support of the current proposal. We believe it's an appropriate use of the property that will have minimal impacts on the adjacent established, single-family neighborhood, and we think the developer has been responsive to the neighbors' concerns that they've heard over the years. As recently as today, there's been a series of discussions regarding signalization of the Winfair Drive and Cary Parkway intersection. And Singh has, Development has indicated a willingness to fund signalization subject to Town of Cary and NCDOT approval. We understand from the traffic studies that the signal warrants are not currently met, but there seems to be some possibility and potential of an agreement whereby Singh would fund the signal in the future when it might be warranted. We understand that it has to meet some minimal requirements, but we think possibly an analysis and reevaluation in the future would be beneficial. So we would encourage those discussions to continue and hopefully result in agreement that might address the evaluation of the signal in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. I'm Eddie Newworth. I have, suffering allergies, so apologies for that. I have been before you many years ago in opposition of a, a development proposal that Singh had brought forward. I also came before you when a proposal came forward on Parcel A to voice opposition to that. I, I felt important to be here today to express support, in general support, for this proposal, and thank Singh Development for coming forward with something that did take into consideration residents' concerns, particularly along the Silver Oaks neighborhood, along Parcel I. I also think it is smart to, to look at Parcel A and Parcel I together as sort of a comprehensive plan, and do appreciate that it's, it looks like a resident, you know, a, a residential use plan sort of comprehensively across both of those intersections. I did want to raise just two concerns. I don't want to be repetitive to other positive comments that were provided. One in particular is the fact that the pedestrian corridor along Winfair Drive for the Silver Oaks neighborhood, that sidewalk resides on the development side, that would be the Waltonwood and the, the townhome property. As of today, it's As of today, it's kind of a mess. Basically, gets a lot of runoff, erosion along that area, a lot of sort of mismanagement from not very kind dog owners who use that part of the property. As this consideration, as this proposal is considered, I would, you know, ask the council or the developer to take into consideration potential mitigation, beautification of that area, making it clear that that's a pedestrian area, making it, the walkways across from New Rail to that sidewalk, make sure those are preserved. Also, would like to make sure that parking, that doesn't become the parking area for the workers or whoever needs to be at the life care facility. The other concern I have, and probably the most important one, is on the map I passed out, you'll see sort of the Silver Lake waterway there. On that map, it's a Google map, looks sort of brown in nature. What you'll see is, is over the last sort of 18 months or 24 months, there's been a lot of development of housing behind that, all the way filling in from behind the Silver Lake neighborhood all the way to 54. As that has happened, that lake has filled with a lot of silt, sediment, non-native invasive plants, all of that stuff. It's becoming a bigger issue. As you can see, we're talking about a proposal that would be 40 acres of development simultaneously over sort of 12 to 24 months. All of that, you know, while there's a stormwater control measure there, all of the water from that property is going to end up down in that Silver Lake basin there. So I would just like the town to be aware, the developer to be aware, maybe have some, you know, funds or mitigation proposed. My main concern is not for the finished product of this, but what happens during the construction over that 12 to 24 months? And what happens? We're seeing bigger and bigger storms. Obviously, there is potential for a lot of damage around that lake, both to the property owners like myself who live along that lake, all the way up New Rail Drive. And it is an important sort of ecosystem and natural part of our community as that water flows into eventually Crabtree and along the whole part of that Black Creek Greenway. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak up on this issue. I've lived in that area first in Springbrook. My name is Ibrahim Rafi. I live in
Thank you.
201 Rosenberry Hills Drive. I went to NC State, lived in that area since 1994, first in Springbrook, now, as I mentioned, in Silver Lake. It's a beautiful area. I travel quite, I used to travel quite a bit for business, and people everywhere mentioned Cary as a nice place to live. And over time, I've seen actually traffic get worse and worse, especially with the new development in Mooresville with the mall right by 54 and Cary Parkway. Over the years, I've had four sets of dogs in series. I used to walk my dogs in all the woods, all the areas. I don't do that anymore, mostly because of the traffic. I have five and a half year old son. I'm not comfortable walking him around with all the traffic, especially rush hour coming on 54. It would really be a good option if that area is turned into a park, I think. At the beginning of the meeting, I introduced some very nice young kids from Le Touquet, France. You probably
Je comprends. Alors, si vous avez bien posé une question. You'd be better to do it in English.
Sorry.
For her, okay.
Had you taken, sorry. Had you taken the opportunity to ask them a question, what would be nicer? They would tell you, "Oh, nice park. Un beau parc. S'il vous plaît, monsieur." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this public hearing? We're going to close this public hearing before we open it up to council members for comments and questions. I do have a couple of questions myself. I want to ask Ms. Grant, and the applicant spoke about garages with each unit and nice fixtures. These aren't a part of the
No, they are not part of the zoning conditions.
I just want to make the applicant aware, I have to ignore that. So if you're saying that and it's not a condition, I'm ignoring it. So I can't consider that. We always consider worst-case scenario, so I totally ignore that. The other two issues I want to talk about, someone mentioned signalization. I think they knew by the comments they made, but we measure the criteria, but the NCDOT allows signals or not allows signals. While we can measure it all day long, we can't put a signal there unless they tell us we can. So no matter how much money they put there, if it doesn't meet the criteria, NCDOT is likely to say, "No signal." And so that's kind of where it is. A lot of people like to blame the town for that, but it's usually NCDOT that's the guilty party there. The other thing with construction runoff, I wonder if you could speak to that, or a member of staff can speak to how we monitor construction runoff. I know we do, but if someone can give us an update about how that's monitored so that they can have a better sense of what we're doing. We just don't allow development, let them run amok and
Yes, thank you. Dan Clinton with the Stormwater Group. We have state and federal regulations that ensure that water is captured before it leaves the construction site. That's effective at reducing the vast majority, the vast majority of the sediment. There is some turbidity that washes through that you just can't get rid of. It's fine particles that are entrained in the water. But the sediment itself is contained within the sediment ponds, and we have inspections done on those on a regular basis to ensure
Can you give me an idea what regular means? Are we talking weekly, monthly?
Multi, multi-times a week do our inspectors come by
Okay.
And look at the sites.
Okay, very good.
Usually after a rain, I would suppose, or
They have a regular inspection procedure and after rain events, so
Very good, thank you. Council members?
I don't have any questions. I have comments, but if people want to ask questions first, then
No, I have comments. I'll do after you.
Okay.
Other questions, then? I think we're all comments, then. Okay, jump in.
First, well, I've been on this council now going on 10 years, and I have been, as well as others, dealing with this quadrant, parcel I, the entire time I've been on the council. I have also seen the numerous proposals, commercial, high-density residential, combination of both, and nothing that was proposed previously seemed to meet the surrounding community's high expectations nor the council's expectations. So first, I would like to thank Mike and the folks from Singh for not giving up and continuing to work and work on something to, I think in the end of the day, is a better or the best project that has been brought forth since. In my honest opinion, I don't know that they could really get a better project in regards to parcel I. Mr. Whistler and Mr. Neworth, I've gotten to know them over the years, and they care deeply about their community and their neighborhood. And to see them, you know, oppose previous projects and come here now and supported this one, to me, speaks volumes. It really does. I remember having meetings where dozens of people were here speaking in opposition of the proposed development of parcel I, and we had a few folks show up with some good comments and things that we should be concerned about and looking at. But I think largely, you know, speak positive of Singh's efforts and their desire to build something that is truly better than what could be built today. Parcel I is owned commercial. If somebody did want to come in and bring a gas station and a drugstore and whatever else, and it met our rules and regs and everything else, we wouldn't see it, and they can build it. If traffic, light, noise, and things are a concern, age-restricted housing and senior life care, it's probably about the best use you can get in regards to that. They don't venture out a whole lot. They don't have loud parties late at night. They don't negatively impact our school system. So there's a lot of positives there. I had actually never heard the term intergenerational residential living before, and it's intriguing to me, largely because we buried my mother-in-law on Saturday and took my father-in-law to the hospital with a minor stroke on Tuesday. So it's something that's on my mind right now, and how do we care for him, and where do we want to be to be able to do that? I get that. So, it's intriguing to me. I want to learn more about that. So, in regards to parcel I, I don't have any concerns, and I heard from a number of residents in the Silverton area, especially those folks along Windfair, New Rail, and et cetera, and the majority of them that I have spoken with seem amenable to this proposal, so I'm okay. Parcel A, I'm intrigued about some of the design things that I've heard about this. It's kind of apartments, but kind of not. You've got garages and things like that, and I think your comments mirror spot-on that while that does sound good, unless those are conditioned into the rezoning, that's something we can't consider. So I would hope that that might be something that somehow we can condition in there. I actually did agree with the comment that maybe these should be two separate rezonings, and if I'm not mistaken, I actually advised the applicant of that about nine months ago when they met with me on this. But I also agree that having this developed comprehensively and the whole intergenerational residential thing, that also makes sense to me, so. And I also appreciate the applicant's efforts to do them together and say, "This is what we want to do for this area. We're not trying to hide anything. We're not trying to get one in first and then come back with a second one later." I mean, I think that speaks volumes to their, their character and who they are. So, the only other comments I would make is while parcel I was originally designed or zoned commercial, and that was the intent for the community, that while I agree residential is a much better use than commercial there, I would wonder if there's a way that we could look at possibly some type of commercial component, whether it's restaurant or retail, in parcel A, and maybe look at that as more of a mixed use instead of just strictly residential. I think that could possibly provide some of the area residents, some of that commercial they maybe had liked to get, or, you know, just might help better serve the neighborhood in that regard, so everybody doesn't have to trek out to Park West for everything. I don't like going to Park West. I still hate them for taking my Chili's off of Kildare Farm Road. So, you know, a couple of restaurants or shopping or a little bit of retail in parcel A along with the residential, I think, might also be helpful or beneficial to the community. So, those are my comments.
Other comments?
Well, obviously, Don has talked to a lot more citizens about this than I have, but I did have one citizen reach out to me and advocate for having some amount of retail put at this intersection, just as Don just stated. And I do think it's important for people to have some neighborhood retail that they can get to easily, that's not a drive away, you know, two miles away or whatever. So I think that's very good. And then, I agree with one of the speakers who said it's really critical that we have some gathering spaces, outdoor gathering spaces, and this is something that we really ask for applicants to consider making an effort to incorporate into their community. And, you know, and looking at this, it looks like there's some, but it'd be nice if it was a little bit more, especially on parcel I. I'm not sure what's going to happen with parcel A, so I'm a little bit concerned about putting the residential there. I'd much rather see office or retail on that site than residential. But, and either way, I guess if it, if either parcel's residential, I'd want much more gathering space that people have a place to go. It kind of drives me crazy when I see kids playing in parking lots.
Other comments?
Yeah, pretty much echo most of what you said there, Don. Very good. I mean, I have, for parcel I, I guess my preliminary opinion, and I use the word preliminary because I guess the analysis the staff has done against the Cary community plan is just preliminary at this point. It would be great to have an opportunity to see a more thorough analysis before we have to actually make that vote. So my opinion right now is preliminary, but parcel I, I'm, seems like I'm okay with. Someone has to mention the champion tree, so it would
[laughing]
But I think for 40 acres to have just one champion tree removed, that's pretty good compared to some of the things that we've seen. So that's not standing in my way. I think a life care community is really needed here in Cary. And my preliminary opinion is that parcel I is fine, provided the construction works out right. The concern with the, with the lake there certainly is a, is a concern, but Mr. Clinton, hopefully, put that at rest. Parcel A, the old plan had it as office and institutional. The new plan has it as employment mixed use, but as Mrs. Granton said, there's an opportunity to consider residential. For me, that opportunity needs to be a real opportunity to consider all residential there and not mixed use. I would love to see some retail. And I'm not the biggest mixed-use guy in the world.
I know.
You all know that. But I think this corner certainly cries out for some office and some retail, not just apartments. Although, learning tonight about the intergenerational approach, that's, that's neat. I mean, that's something I didn't know about. Just learned that tonight. Of course, we would want to see conditions to make sure that happens, and we don't have any at this point. And Mrs. Nelson's comments also about her business and how that would affect this parcel, that's something else I learned new tonight. So, a lot of this is new stuff, and it's, my opinion is very preliminary, but I'm, I'm pretty much okay with I and not so much okay with A.
So on the, under the Cary community plan, when it said traditional neighborhood, and this you said is compatible with traditional neighborhood or would be, or is that your preliminary is
Based on the preliminary analysis, yes.
Okay. And then on the signal warrants, I do know that even the money, money can be set aside, I think there's even money set aside for one that's being continually tested and when High, not High
West High.
West High gets completed, that money's sitting there. So I think the neighbors could have a good feeling that if it got to the signal warrants, that if that's, money's there, then there would be a stoplight, and that's, it will happen at West High if it meets the signal warrant. So I think that's, so it's not just a promise with the, it can be there. I like the together. I think this is what we've been asking for, is comprehensive rather than, I've been hearing from you all, asking for comprehensive rather than little pieces and parts all along the way. And so that made sense to me a lot. And in the, and also in these conditions, I saw the proposal, when did I see this proposal? Almost a year ago, maybe May or June last year. It seems like I saw a proposal for parcel A, and when I saw the parcel and even heard the comments tonight, which I ignored the word upscale, and materials, but I didn't hear conditions with those, but that led me to believe there were conditions because two things were talked about. And so I just assumed there would be conditions when you're talking about things. And I think that's why we can't bait and swap, and we can't have that with us, we can't do that with the community. So, I would appreciate it when speakers come up and say stuff, that if they're going to promise stuff, it's got to be in a condition because you're, it's, it is bait and swap, and I think we need to do away with that.
Any other comments?
I would just like to point out something that staff has advised the applicant of is that they've referenced the empty nester townhomes, but there is no zoning condition pertaining to age restricted for the townhomes. And the intergenerational concept is marketing. It's, it sounds great, but again, there's nothing that guarantees that these two developments will be under the same management. They're currently under separate ownership, but, but just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record, that it's maybe age-targeted, but it's not a zoning condition at this time.
Thank you for pointing that out.
This will go to our Planning and Zoning Board, and if there are no changes, then the Planning and Zoning Board will make a review and make a recommendation, and it will come back to us at a later date. However, if there are changes between now and the Planning and Zoning Board, then there will be a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Board on those changes. So those that are here to speak, you might want to keep, be aware of that. And so if you see any changes in the proposal, then you'll have an opportunity to speak at the Planning and Zoning Board. After they make their recommendation, which is at least two months away, it'll be sent back to us for a decision. Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move to a discussion item, and our first discussion item is 6.1, fiscal year 2017, street improvements projects. Mr. Wood will present this item, and council may take action. Mr. Wood.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we will be presenting the construction bid award for the FY 2017 Street Improvements In a continuous effort to keep Cary streets great, we received bids on March 10th for the construction of the FY 2017 Street Improvements Project. Staff recommends awarding the construction Staff recommends awarding the construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Land Construction Company. Overall, the streets within Cary are in very good shape. Of the total 470 miles of streets within Cary, 60% of the streets are in very good, very good condition. The resurfacing portion of the street improvements program uses capital improvement funds to address the 16% of poor, the very poor streets within Cary. Smart investing keeps our streets in great condition. We maintain an average payment condition rating of 82.7 by investing in resurfacing along with pay, preventive maintenance techniques. As this chart indicates, investing in preventive maintenance techniques prevents costly repairs in the future. Here we have a picture of one of the many streets in Cary rated in good condition. By continuously investing in the street improvements program, we are able to keep Cary streets in overall good condition. So how does Cary keep our streets great? Well, this year, we will resurface 15 miles, or 3.2% of our 470 mile network through the street improvements project. Although street resurfacing is a large part of the program, the street improvements project is so much more than just paving roads. Most streets being resurfaced have the surface layer removed through milling. This removes the old cracked surface layer to create a good foundation for the new surface course. The asphalt millings are returned to the asphalt plants to be recycled into new asphalt products. Also, patching is not just placing asphalt into a pothole. Prior to placing the new asphalt, the contractor removes the old asphalt and subgrade to eliminate the underlying problems creating the potholes. The streets improvements program incorporates innovative techniques such as fabrics or full depth reclamation where needed prior to resurfacing. This helps provide longevity to the newly resurfaced streets. This fabric was applied on Kingston Ridge Road and Fairlane Road this past year. Utility adjustments and repairs are made as needed to preserve the integrity of our streets and infrastructure. Furthermore, we continue to look forward at other projects within Cary to ensure proper timing and paving techniques are applied. Curb replacement and other repairs are performed to replace damaged curb and improve drainage where needed. Proper drainage is essential to maintaining the road's integrity. When necessary, curb ramps are replaced to meet current federal standards established by the American Disabilities Act. This helps to ensure that all Cary citizens can safely navigate to and from the sidewalk. Sidewalk repairs are also made when needed. Existing signal loops and pavement markings are replaced as needed, providing a proper finish and keeping Cary streets safe. Furthermore, pavement preservation techniques such as rejuvenators and crack sealants are applied where appropriate. By using preventive maintenance techniques to keep the roads in great shape, we extend the life of the surface course and the late need for resurfacing. Let's take a look at how preventive maintenance is a cost benefit to the town. In 2014, resurfacing was the only method of pavement repair being implemented on town streets. Cary resurfaced 20 miles of streets at an average cost of $184,000 per mile. In 2015, Cary implemented pavement preservation techniques into the street improvements program. By utilizing various pavement preservation techniques, Cary has improved more streets at a lower cost per mile. This year, we will resurface and perform preventive maintenance techniques on approximately 36 miles of streets within Cary. If we were only using resurfacing methods today, it would cost approximately 15 million to resurface the equivalent of 37 miles. As we have seen, there are several factors involved with the street improvements program. We can continue to keep town of Cary streets great by investing in resurfacing, appropriate repairs, and preventive maintenance techniques. Many of these improvements may not be immediately seen in the overall rating of the streets, but they do continue to keep the overall transportation system and infrastructure in great condition. In summary, staff recommends award of the bid for construction of the FY 2017 street improvements project, ST 1261, the Land Construction Corporation. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Mr. Wood, thank you for that presentation. As mayor, I have the joy of getting a lot of comments first before I send them to you. You've responded to a few. One of the comments I get, or one of the things that people have a hard time understanding, and they don't, is it really not their responsibility to understand, is what is town maintained streets and what are NC DOT maintained streets? Because if you ride down Cary Parkway in some places now, you're going, well, this doesn't look like it's in good condition.
Right.
But that's an NCA D project, or actually, one section we're going to repave and then turn it over to DOTs. But if you could, just in very general, and it's not exclusively or absolute, but if you could give an idea what's town streets maintain and what is DOT maintain.
The majority of the streets that are maintained by the state are normally your four lane divided type facilities like Cary Parkway, High House Road, Main Road, and they are being maintained by the state and are evaluated each year as well, but they're competing against all the roads within Wake County and throughout the state. Most of the town streets that we maintain are inside the downtown area or within the subdivision neighborhoods and that type of, and that type of areas. We do have some thoroughfare and collector's streets that we maintain, but we're doing a great job of keeping those as well. Like you say, we're, do have the Northwest Cary Parkway project coming in this, this spring as well.
I drive that every day. I'm looking forward to that repayment. Other comments?
I have some questions. First, we still, you know, for the record, we still independently assess the streets so that we can determine our priorities.
That is correct. It's an independent consultant firm that goes through and does the rating of the streets.
Okay, I just wanted the public, you know, to know that. And I'm kind of intrigued, if I'm understanding this correctly from your presentation, we now have a methodology where we, we can do some preventive work on the surface. And let me, let me tell you, my observation is that in a lot of the older cul, especially the cul-de-sacs, and I think some of that is, you know, the pressure of the, our trucks making the turns, we have a lot of cracks. The street isn't really bad, but there's just something I can't get my head around, seeing grass and a street grow together. You know, I mean, and over time, that has got to hurt the street.
Right.
So, is that part of the assessment that goes on? Because, you know, I can look at areas and I can see where, for the most part, the, the road surface seems reasonably healthy, but because of these stress cracks and growth coming through them, you know, it's got to accelerate the problem. Is that addressed? I mean, sorry for the leading question, but...
Yeah, not a problem.
But that's where my concern is, what we try to get on top of this huge challenge that we have.
So, one of the things that we currently do is the rejuvenator. Now, the rejuvenator's normally done on your good to very good streets, which adds very little to no cracking. And it actually is there to keep next street in great condition. On the thoroughfare streets, we do crack sealing on, when we get age cracks and, and things like that. But we chose not to do it in neighborhoods, because it kind of gives it that old spiderweb look that no one really likes in their neighborhood. And, but on some of the thoroughfare streets, we even done it back here on Durham Road, it, it just makes a right fit. But we're also currently investigating ways that we can look more into ways to address those fair streets that may just have slight, moderate cracking and/or rattling. And by that, we could, you know, and maybe put like a micro surface or, or that type of treatment on it. The biggest concern that we have with those as we're, as we're looking at them, is to make sure that we find the right product that fits a good neighborhood approach. It's not a product that has to wait so long to dry and that type of thing and interrupts the, the lives of the, those in the neighborhood. So there's a lot of things that we're still investigating and, and trying to look into when it comes to those. And then sometimes with the roads that are, you know, have a lot of the cracking and, is there are, it does kind of get to a point, as we, as we've seen in the curve, let's go back up to that if we, if we can. So a lot of times when you start seeing the cracks like you, like you were referring to, you're, you're getting down into this part of the area of the curve, and it's getting to the point that even though you may put a treatment on it, it's not going to fix the problem. It's just going to cover the problem. So there's, there's kind of, there's kind of a timeframe in there when the street will, will have the cracks, but it's just not ready to be resurfaced yet. And it's just a matter of time before we get it on the resurfacing list.
Mr. Wood, I think I understood this, because I had a citizen call and asked us, and I want to make this be maybe good for the public. I understand that sometimes when you're working in a very poor street, that there might be one that wasn't, didn't make the cut, but it's adjacent. And because you've got your equipment nearby, you will do a street, I've gotten a report that, oh, that street wasn't so bad that they did, and we looked it up, and you were doing a very, very poor one, like, like within 50 feet.
Right.
Can we explain that, how that, how that works to save money?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things that we are also doing to help make Cary great is to look more into a neighborhood approach when we look at the, evaluate the streets. So we will take, for instance, the lowest rated street in town, and we're most definitely going to pave that street segment. So what we also do is we look at in that neighborhood and see what falls have been poor to very poor in that neighborhood, so that we can actually have the contractor pave those streets at the same time. With that, that helps us out by reducing the amount of mobilizations that the contractor has, as well as tries to prevent the number of times that the contractor has to go into the subdivisions time after time after time.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. That's what I understood.
Other comments?
I'll just say, I thought it was an excellent staff report. You all did a really great job explaining the problem and putting it all into context for us and for the citizens. I want to thank you for that. That was excellent.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a motion?
Make a motion to award the contract as, as laid out by the staff report.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you.
We now move to council-initiated items, item 6.2, the downtown fountain. For council's operation procedure, the council may take one of the following actions. We can discuss this item and take an action. We can refer to staff or at a, to come back at a future meeting with additional information, or we can decide not to pursue at all. This item is about the downtown fountain and the coins that are in the, being tossed in there, and I'm going to give it to Mr. Yerha to let him explain.
Thank you, mayor. The downtown park is open, and so far, I have to say, it seems to be a, quite a big success. The overwhelming number of comments that I've received have been positive, and we've even received one tonight during the public hearing. Part of that success, I believe, is attributed to the fountain that's out the corner. And speaking of that fountain, we've noticed that people are doing what they normally do with fountains, and that is throwing coins in them and perhaps making wishes in the process. And although it may be beyond our authority to make any of the specific wishes come true, it is, I think, within our authority to decide how to put the money that's tossed into the fountain to a specific use. And I think it would be great if we could designate it in some way that directly gives back to the community. And that if we decide to do something like that, to communicate this to the citizens, I don't know, we'll let the staff decide how best to do that, but perhaps with a small sign or even a plaque on the fountain, talking about that. Since bringing this forward last week with Councilmember Bush, I've learned that the staff is already one step ahead of us in, in some of this. They already have a process in place to remove the coins from the fountain, and they are already keeping accounting, I believe, of the money that has been received. And maybe they even have a suggestion as to how to, what use to put that money to. I, I don't know. So I'd like to hear from them tonight, if they have some, some thoughts. And of course, I want to hear from y'all. And the result would be to refer this back to staff for details, and they could come back to us. Or perhaps if we're all of one mind tonight, which could happen, we might want to just put it to bed tonight. We're not talking big bucks here. It's not going to offset the potential loss of impact fees, I don't think. And it's certainly not something we'd want to spend an awful lot of time talking about or agonizing over. But it is something that I think if we've done, done the right way, it's something that could benefit the community and would allow our citizens a way to participate in doing this, rather than just literally throwing their money away.
Very good, yeah. Mr. Stiegel, do you have anything to add?
Sure, I, I mean, we can really complete our analysis this evening if it pleases the council. In, in meeting with the, the staff on this, found out, asked them if any of them have ever thrown a coin in a fountain, and everybody raised their hand. So we knew right there what they thought it was a good idea. Also found out, in speaking with Karen Mills, we, we do not have petty cash. I mean, every organization I've ever heard of has petty cash. We don't have petty cash at the town of Cary, which means that we account for every penny to the T, right, Karen? So in fact, we have a process to be able to account for the coins that are donated via a wish or what have you into our fountain. What we would do now is develop what I think could be a really fun, public interest, public information campaign, encouraging people to visit the park and to throw some money into the fountain for a certain period of time. Have no idea what to predict. We'll get more than we're getting now, certainly. How long it'll last, what it'll look like, there's no way to know, but I think, I think we can certainly handle it. It's just a matter of where the funds would be directed to, and maybe the Parks and Recreation Department scholarship for those who don't have the financial means to access our programs. I think Doug had made that suggestion, and that seems a, a perfect nexus. Of course, since we already have that account as well, it'd make it another, make the administration seamless. And so all we would do now is work with Doug and Susan to develop a, a campaign and launch it.
I love it.
What are your thoughts, Ed?
Sounds very good to me. Like I say, they're, they're one, they're more than one step ahead of us, they're two or three steps ahead, which is wonderful.
Want to make a motion?
I love the idea of having those funds go to the Relief for Recreation Scholarship Program within the Parks Department. I think that's amazing. When they initially contacted me, my first reaction was like, you know, add it to the lazy days grant funds or something like that, but I like this idea a lot better. It really helps provide for those that are less fortunate. And I'll just add that when we're talking about coins in a fountain, we've got some pretty good problems here in Cary, right?
Yeah.
I mean, good night, it's good to be Cary, so...
Unless you're down at State House.
Yeah, my, my heart's thrice warmed tonight, because at first was warmed by the fact that we're talking about what to do with the, the coins and the fountain, and have the wonderful fountain, and then that we've got a place to, a wonderful place to put them. I think it's wonderful. And then to hear my fellow councilman use the word "y'all" in referring to us, that really warmed my heart tonight, so we...
Did I say that?
You said "y'all."
You did.
You did.
All "y'all."
You did.
I'm rubbing off on him.
So, Mr. Yerha, would you like to make a motion for "y'all"?
For "yes," for "yes."
For "yes."
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we designate the funds that are tossed into the fountain for the Relief for Recreation Scholarship Fund within the Parks and Rec Department, and that we ask the staff to develop a process to communicate this to our citizens.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, further discussion.
We'll keep you updated and in the weekly reports coming forward, and then we'll, you'll see, it'll be everywhere. We'll keep everyone updated as to our progress.
Yeah, I'm dying to actually see how much it results in.
Yeah.
Is this 50 bucks or 500 bucks? I just like...
We should start a lottery on that.
Yeah.
You can guarantee it'll be 500 or more if, if you'll contribute.
There you go, there you go.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I don't want to be a Grinch, but can I bring up one thing about the fountain?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, is, like, I noticed tonight, a lot of kids playing in the fountain. Oh, the horrors. I know, is that safe? I mean, is that safe? That's a question, is it safe?
Yeah, their moms and dads are all around and it's good.
Yeah, their moms and dads are all around, and it's good.
That's why, you're my grounding here, Don.
We want people to have fun there. We want them to have a great time. We want people to go there and enjoy it, and it was warm today, and the water mist and stuff feels great, and it's awesome.
Okay, then I really like the kids in there.
There you go.
I just, I had to ask the question.
I just didn't know if you wanna, if you wanna know what we're, what, because we're developing rules for the parks. And a part of it is, the first rule would be have as much fun as possible.
Right.
That will be on the sign, along with park hours, and we aren't going, whatever's obvious safety problems there, there may be, we will point out, but we're not going to tell people to do things that a sign isn't gonna keep them from doing anyway, because it just doesn't work.
I agree.
Yeah.
No, I just, bring me up.
Yeah.
I don't want anybody hurt.
Right.
Very good. And if there is no other business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, and we are adjourned.